As the mayor of the town of Clayton, I'd like to call this regular town council meeting to order. I ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly father, we stop to give you thanks for the many blessings of this day, Lord, and we ask that you now be with us as we proceed with the business for the town of Clayton, for it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we'd like to remove item 7A. We'll address it at another date.
All right, I got that down. Up next is the approve the agenda as presented. Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the amended agenda with removal of item 7A.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to accept the agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is your consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And the motion carries. Up next, under administrative items, will be the board of adjustment appointment.
Mayor and council, the board of adjustment had one in-town vacancy within an unexpired term of December 31st, 2023. Applications were received and interviews were scheduled and conducted. The interview panel included council liaison, staff member to the board, and board chair. Based on interviews, the following recommendation would be for Ruth Anderson to fill this vacancy.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the appointment of Ruth Anderson to the board of adjustment. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Okay, move on to employee introductions. Getting in with Greg Nelson.
Good evening, council, mayor, rich. I'd like to take the time tonight to introduce our newest floor custodian, Fred Evans. Fred served four years in the military and he's retired from Bridgestone Tires in Wilson. Fred joined us a few weeks ago and with his new employment on our team, he's already made a big impact on our floors appearance. Sorry. He's already become a very valued member of our team. Thank you.
Awesome.
Fred?
Just want to say thank you and for the opportunity in front of City of Clayton and y'all. It's basically it.
Welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Welcome, and we thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Greg. Okay, up next on the agenda is the governor's proclamation and recognition of minority enterprise development month. That's okay.
Great.
Do you have a PowerPoint?
Yes.
Good evening, mayor, council. I'm sorry for the technical delays there. Haven't been up here in a while, so, you know, a bit of nervous here. But, um, yes, I come for you tonight with the proclamation from Governor Cooper. He is recognizing minority enterprise development month, October 20,000, 20,022. And so I wanted to bring this forward. So a little bit about this. You ask yourself, what is the minority development month? The minority enterprise development month recognizes and celebrates accomplishments and impacts by our minority entrepreneurs across the state. It provides an opportunity for networking. It provides for expansion and allows minority vendors a place at the table when it comes to building and subcontracting contracts. Some key facts I found interesting. Governor Cooper stated that historically underutilized businesses drive innovation and strengthen our state's economy. And they said, he said that the state will continue working to provide the resources and educate workforce that these businesses need to succeed. North Carolina is home to 234,000 businesses owned by minorities, and this was according to the U.S. Department of Commerce Minority Business Development Agency. These businesses achieve more than 16.1 billion in sales each year. However, many of these businesses were disproportionately impacted by COVID-19. As we all know, a lot of these smaller companies, they lost their businesses, went out of business. So the governor in 2020 issued the executive order 143 to assist the historically underutilized businesses to promote equitable economic recovery and more opportunities to the state and local government contracts. To date, hub firms for the construction projects, goods and services, reached a 10-year high during the past fiscal year. I thought that was pretty amazing that they were able to bounce back, come back with the governor's aid and all the aid that hub was allowed to give them. They had a couple of grants. They set up a new team that formed this retool NC for the hubs. I thought this was very interesting to have this for our minority vendors. You ask yourself, what is the minority enterprise development week? I was going to let you know, there is Med Week celebration 2022, power and capital, strength and equity. That's tomorrow and Wednesday at the McKimmon Center here in Raleigh, North Carolina. And also Durham had a Med Week. Greenville, the city of Greenville had a Med Week. Jacksonville, North Carolina, had a day that they honored their minority contractors. And also, the town of Cary was doing one, also a day one. But the town, I can tell you, the city of Greenville and the city of Durham have two of the best MWBE programs in the state of North Carolina that I've seen. So next year, I'm hoping that the town of Clayton during this month, we can put together, or I can put together something for us as outreach and maybe put on one of these Med Week during this week of October. I think that would be great to have us on the map. Also, I'm going to be representing Clayton at the town, City of Raleigh's MWBE Expo. That comes up in January, and we're hoping also to do a MWBE outreach here with other municipalities in Johnston County and possibly our neighboring Wade Counties here in Clayton also. Hoping to do this. We're working on our outreach program, and hopefully I will be implementing that out to the departments. Hopefully March, hopefully is the, but the deadline's March, but I'm hoping to get it out before then. And working with the departments like engineering, we're looking to bring in the subcontractors, the MWBE vendors, and actually make our efforts to obtain our goal that we have throughout the town. So with that being said, I'd like for the mayor and town to recognize this proclamation from the governor, everybody, to name minority enterprise development month for the year, for the month of October 2022.
Awesome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Questions or comments?
I think we would love to host something next year for sure.
Yes, definitely have something next year. Yes. And I was going to work with the chamber and also Johnston County, maybe get the city of Raleigh to come, you know, work with us. We're working with them. We're going to work for them, and I think it'd be a good event for Clayton to have, to work forward to this. Yes.
Mr. Abey?
I just want to say thank you for all your hard work. I know we had, you know, a brief conversation about this, but I love you that you're so focused on this part of the business. So thank you so much for that.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you all.
Okay, moving on to new business will be the water resources USDA loan payoff budget amendment.
Evening, mayor, members of council, proper MacCain finance director. Tonight, we're asking council to approve amendment to pay off the USDA loan. We have two loans. One is for the elevator water storage tank that's over behind Fire Station 2 on 42. And the other, the largest piece, is for the Raleigh-Clayton force main that we have. What came up during this, our upcoming revenue bond issuance for the Sam's Branch Water Reclamation Facility is that the USDA has a parity request requirement. So every time the town wants to issue debt, we have to go to the USDA, ask them to approve the parity request. And that request is going to take two to four months, and it just didn't line up with this revenue bond issuance. It was going to stall this from us being able to issue revenue bond. So we decided it was a better option to go ahead and pay off that USDA loan, which is a 40-year loan. We're going to save approximately $3,978,000 by paying this USDA loan off early. Of course, some of those savings will be turned around and be used because we're going to be winding financing, you know, having to finance a little larger amount because we don't have those proceeds to go to something else, which is basically going to be Lumen Project, about $6.5 million. So these two amounts line up. We'll have, we have a $6.5 million commitment on the Lumen Copper District for that tanker, tank project. And we're going to be including that $6.5 million in the current revenue bond issuance we're going to do for Sam's Branch. So these two dollar amounts basically line up with each other. It's kind of a good match. So that's really kind of sums it up. Any questions on the proposal?
Questions or comments?
All right.
Good work. Thank you, sir. I think it's awesome anytime you can save $3.9 million. Yes.
All right.
If no questions or comments for staff, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Thompson?
Mayor, I move we approve adoption of ordinance 2022-10-02.
A second.
Got a motion and a second for approval. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Up next is the Capital Art Arts Grant, the Johnston County Tourism Authority Grant 22, 2022-23.
Good evening, mayor, council. I'm Martha Vandergriff with the Cultural Arts Department, and I am here to present to you an opportunity that our department has received from Johnston County Tourism Authority. We have been the proud award recipient of the Capital Arts Grant. And what this means is that we have available to us up to $16,000 for the project of repainting our auditorium. It is a matching grant, and the money has been allocated in this year's budget, but we would be able to get up to half of that back in this grant. It's a reimbursement, so we would have to spend the money out first, and then they would write us a check afterward. Is there any questions?
No, but that's awesome. Yeah. Questions or comments for staff? None. We thank you. Thank you for all the effort to help, you know, get us to where we're going with this. You know, grant is where it's at. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Thompson?
Mayor, I move we approve the acceptance of the grant and give authority to the town manager to execute the acceptance letter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to accept the grant application and give the authority to the town manager to execute that acceptance letter. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, up next is, yet again, North Carolina Arts Council Lead Scholarship Grant 2022-23.
The Cultural Arts Department is also been an award, received an award letter for the LEAD Scholarship Grant from the North Carolina Arts Council. This is, part of it was participation in a statewide arts accessibility cohort. And so Stephen Langston, our interim director, was able to go and participate that and participate in that in August, I believe. And it was a two or three-day conference where they just discussed and learned about accessibility and being an accessible venue, but also that the programs are accessible. The other exciting part of that is $2,500 that we can use free and clear, no matching requirement, to make either the programs or the facility more accessible. We would like to use this money to purchase or upgrade our assistive listening devices to be more accessible to our hearing impaired audience.
Fantastic. Questions or comments for staff?
All right, thank you. I'll entertain a motion. Ms. Archer?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move to approve the acceptance of the grant and give authority to the town manager to execute the acceptance letter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. And last, but certainly not least, the art grant, North Carolina Arts Council Grant 2022-23.
So the Cultural Arts Department also applied for this grant back in May, and we found out in, I believe, August, might have been early September, that we have been awarded $12,683 to support our new effort towards family and educational programming here. This money will be used to pay artist fees, hospitality, backstage amenities. It'll also help with some other things that I'm drawing a blank on at the moment. But anyway, it helps support these programs. And specifically, we're going to have a show in November called The Joshua Show that's targeted at preschoolers and young elementary age audiences. And then we'll have Jason Hooty and his Mesmerizing Magic Show in January that targets children of all ages. So we hope to see all of you out there. But anyway, it will support these two programs in our effort to reengage families and make arts and live entertainment a go-to for the families in Clayton, in the Clayton Center, their go-to venue to do that. So again, it's $12,000 that we're looking to accept to promote those programs.
That is awesome. Questions or comments for staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Sims?
I make the motion that we approve the acceptance of the grant and give authority to the town manager to execute the acceptance letter.
Thank you, sir. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Great work. Thank you. All right, up next is the school bond resolution of support. Councilman Casey?
Mr. Mayor and council, I want to just talk about something really important to the county and to our school system tonight. On November 8th, there's an upcoming school bond referendum. The county commissioners, for those that don't know, the county commissioners and the school board are the decision-making bodies for the students and for the schools. The town doesn't really have any purview in that. However, we are able to offer a proclamation of support. The school board and the commissioner sided the best route was through this particular bond referendum. And this bond referendum directly helps some of the schools within our town limits, one being Cooper School. Several members of council have went to Cooper School, so did I, and my daughter's going there now. There's, they got great teachers, they got great staff, but nothing's really changed from that school. If you've been in it, been around it since the time I went there 30 years ago. So this bond referendum will help make some major improvements to that school and some others within our town limits. So with that being said, I'd just like to read this proclamation. Resolution of support of the 2022 school bond referendum. Whereas Johnston County is the fastest growing county in North Carolina, and it's the ninth fastest growing county in the nation. And whereas, right now, in our Johnston County poet schools, we have 186 mobile classrooms. 72% of our schools are at or over capacity. And whereas Johnston County Public Schools currently has an enrollment of more than 37,000 and remains the second fastest growing district in the state. Each year, its students' population increased by almost 700 students. And the passing of this bond will fund new schools and safety and security upgrades for all schools. And whereas Johnston County, Johnson Community College serves more than 15,000 students and has a significant infrastructure needs that will only grow over time, the college's portion of this bond will help pay for a new engineering building and house the college's growing engineering program. And whereas this bond will provide $61 million for Johnston County Public Schools and $15 million for Johnston Community College for such needed improvements, expansions, and additions. The passing of this bond will allow Johnston County to finance the cost of the listed projects over a long period of time without a tax increase. Whereas on Tuesday, August 9th of 2022, Johnston County Board of Education approved $177 million bond referendum as a proposal for voter approval. And now therefore, it be resolved that the Clayton Town Council wishes to express their support and urge Clayton residents to take the time to learn more and vote on November 8th, 2022, in favor of this important bond duly adopted this 17th day of October while in regular session.
Thank you.
Do you want to make a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the adopted resolution 2022-84.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a, for the resolution supporting the school bond. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Yes, sir. All right, moving down to staff reports, beginning with the town manager.
No report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Town attorney?
No report.
Thank you, sir. Town clerk?
No report.
Thank you, ma'am. Turn it over to other staff. Mr. Clausen?
Good evening, mayor, council. I'm here to give you an update on a dump truck that the town purchased on September 29th. And we're trying to start a partnership with the schools and through artwork on this truck. So, there we go. So that's a picture of the dump truck. When we purchased that truck, it is a used truck. Everybody knows with the supply chain, everything going on, 24 to 36 months, you get a truck. So we searched for a slightly used truck, found one in Virginia. We got it for $250,000. That was the amount that had been budgeted for buying a dump truck. And it's just a perfect coincidence that this truck was Clayton Comet blue.
Wrong one.
So one of Big Blue's big benefits is it'll significantly reduce the town's need for contract hauling. We've contracted hauling for salt, sand, different aggregates to the operations center, so our storage places. So with this truck, in addition to our fleet, we can haul our own stuff. We won't have to contract stuff out anymore. to contract stuff out anymore. In our vision, we've spoken, Chief Barbie has spoken to the public advisory board about this truck and doing some artwork on it to have a partnership with the schools. Mr. Shelton and I talked to Bennett Jones with the high school about doing some project with the high school with the art classes or just put it out for the whole school, do like a competition for a wrap on this truck. So part of our vision is on that front cab potato there, they have Big Blue. That's what we'll call the truck. And then have a white town of Clayton logo on the door. And on the front fender, we'll put the Clayton Comet logo on the front fender on both sides. And then on the bed sides, we'll, that'll be where we do put a wrap that the students design. And then that's the opposite side of the truck. So we'll have both sides, if that's a first and second place, or if it's the same on both sides. And then on the tailgate, we thought the Comet C would see town on the back. That way, when we're driving away from everybody, they can see it's Seetown that's driving away. So we just, that's our vision of kind of what we want to do with the truck. And like I said, we've talked to the Art Advisory Council and the high school. So we're looking, they seem excited about it, so we're just going to talk to them and see where we can go with this and see what kind of ideas they have. And then we'll move forward with that process with this truck. So, and then since we've, since we've talked about this, actually driving back from Virginia, we talked about it, hey, this would be cool to do something with the Comets and the schools and stuff. We've actually found APWA Reporter Magazine in the October edition. There's a town in Illinois that had elementary schools, actually, they have eight snowplows, and they let the elementary schools name these plows. So that's something else, maybe in the future, we can go even further out into elementary schools or middle schools or whatever. So that's kind of our vision with this truck. So, any questions? And the truck's outside if anybody wants to.
Mr. Sims.
Look at it.
Just curious, do you know roughly, and if you don't, it's fine, but do you know roughly what's the average of what we contract as far as hauling per year?
I don't off the top of my head. I think the salt, we usually do about 20 tons a year, and it's roughly $100 a ton. And then I would have to go back and look. I can, I can find out for you if you, to find out what we contract.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. And one more quick question. What do you say is the, the usage as far as the life usage on this one that we purchased?
So that, that truck has 32,000 miles on it, and there's trucks with that motor, that transmission in it that have a million miles on them. So that truck will, all of us will be gone before we wear that truck out.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, I mean, that's because the good die young, but I know what you're saying. Mr. Thompson.
I think it's a great idea. I like engaging the schools and bringing a sense of pride in the community and our schools. And I think it kind of goes hand in hand with what we've been working on lately with workforce development. And I was really pleased to see y'all specifically down at the community college recently doing, you know, showing kids about what the town of Clayton, what job opportunities we have to offer. And I think any opportunity we have to let students into our world, be it with helping us with vehicles or anything, that is an opportunity to engage them about their future careers and an opportunity to showcase what we have to offer as a town. So I think this will also help with that, that if we've got something that engages them enough, they want to check it out, then that gives an opportunity to check us out. And, you know, a lot of the studies now have shown that children are developing their career paths in middle school. You know, they're not like we were when you get to high school, figure out what you want to do. They're, they're really young. And anything that we can do to engage the school system in any way is a positive. And I think this is going to be one of those things.
Agreed. Mr. Casey.
I agree, Councilman Thompson. I think this is a great idea. I think it would represent the town really well. I think when I see things like this, I also think it's a good opportunity to maybe even solicit some sponsorships to help with, you know, the labeling and the cost to do that. You know, obviously, the focus needs to be on the artwork from the students, but if we're fortunate enough to have a business or entity that would be willing to sponsor it, I mean, I think that's a great avenue to help fund it as well. Thank you for presenting this to us.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
I wouldn't mind really seeing the town logo on the back of that truck. You know, like the town logo in all white on the left side of that C, and then maybe a comet on the right side of that C. Now, I'm, I'm not, you know, I'm just making a suggestion because it's, you know, a quarter of a million dollars. But I love the idea of the rap, you know, and our, our art student kids at Clayton High School will knock that out of the ballpark.
Yes, sir.
But I do, I think, you know, have a little touch of white up there for the graphic and another touch of white of the comet up against that blue. And it really, and, and that way, the, the C stands for Comets, and it stands for Clayton, and it stands for community. So...
Right.
That's my two cents for it.
All righty.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good work.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to old business. I'll now open the floor for informal discussion and public comment.
Evening, Mayor and council. My name is Michael Granus. I live at 215 Beaufort Loop here in Clayton, 27527. Here tonight to represent homeowners in the walk at East Village. In Phase Two, there is a requirement due to a landscape site plan to have trees put in the front of each property. And I want to take the opportunity to thank you all who were able to come out and actually view the situation out there. There are a number of properties that it, it doesn't seem to make sense that the tree be placed in the front location and that has been designated. And the reason for this is, is because it's very close to curbs, driveways, sidewalks, sewer cleanouts, and also water meters. And in several years, the root structure of these trees more than likely are going to damage those areas. And as a result, I would like to ask the council to have the planning director waive the specific requirement in Phase Two for such trees. And one of the things that the homeowners have asked the developers to do is where applicable or possible to add some of those trees in other areas, most notably common areas of Phase Two. And we're, we're hoping that that's a reasonable request, and if the council would go ahead and designate the planning director to waive that requirement. Any questions?
No. I'll say, I'm sure some of you guys went too, but I went to look, and, you know, it really is less than three feet. And it is near a lot of infrastructure. And, you know, I, I think that it's good that we can be proactive with this instead of just like demanding that, you know, it goes in based on what the plan says. Actually, common sense rule says they probably don't need to go there at all because of, like Mr. Granus stated, the perplexities of what it's going to do, future growth. You know, we have to keep in mind too, that those streets are not town of Clayton streets. They're privately owned. And, you know, obviously, we want to be a good neighbor with their HOA and, and not help HOA to have to spend funds unnecessarily if we can do something to prevent that. So...
Mr. Thompson.
I agree with everything you said. It was enlightening to go out and take a look at it. I also appreciate your comments with regard to staff and how helpful staff have been with going out and evaluating the issue. That's, you know, it's good to hear that you had a good interaction there. And to me, it just doesn't make sense. You know, we went down this route with the Main Street trees. When they were baby trees, it was okay, but as they grew, they caused more problems than they helped. And I think in the, the instances, the, the places you showed us, it would be the same scenario. It, it won't be a big problem now, but those trees will mature, and in a few years, it's going to be more problems than they're worth right now. And I appreciate you bringing it to our attention, and I fully support authorizing staff to waive that.
Mr. Sims.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo a little bit what Councilman Thompson said, same, same sentiments, but also like to say, this is, I think this is one of those situations where the, sometimes the way you plan it and you actually start to take a look at it, it doesn't really kind of make sense. And it's a small enough thing that we can make a quick adjustment on and where the citizens would be happy with this adjustment. You and I know one young lady came out and spoke with me, and she's just happy for the fact that we were even considering it. So I think this is one of those win-win situations.
Ms. Archer.
I agree. Thank you for having us out there and engaging us, and I can see the problems as well. My, my main curiosity was how it ended up this way. I doubt that I was on council for when that plan came through or how it, how it got approved. But looking at the plan that you, thank you for providing that day, it clearly looks like the intent was for the trees to be that way. So I'm hoping that's either something that we can catch for future reference, or I don't know if it has to do something with roads, sidewalks, landscaping, kind of how it got to that point, if that's something we as a council need to pay attention to or, or anything like that, but just moving forward so we don't have these kinds of issues again. But thank you.
Mr. Casey.
I want to echo everybody's sentiments, especially Councilwoman Archer's just then. I'm typically in favor of trees lining the street. I think that's a beautiful aesthetic. I think it makes the community look, you know, a lot better. But in this situation, I went out there, you know, you definitely, you know, brought it to our attention, and everyone we spoke to was very civil, respectful, and I just thought, you know, I think that's the way it really should do, should go. And like I said, I'm in favor in general of street lined trees, but I think in this situation, it just didn't, it wasn't the will of the people out there, and it just didn't, didn't fit well. And thank you for doing this.
Well, and I also want to thank you all for your comments, and I would be remiss if I didn't also let you know that both Jonathan Jacobs and Michael Werner were very accommodating when they came out to take a look at the situation. And to me, it, it truly is a win-win, and it's about trying to work together. And I think in this case, up to this point, that's certainly what we've done. And again, our thanks for even considering this.
All right, thank you, sir. So with the consensus of the council, we'll just direct the manager to get with planning and take care of this. That be good?
Yep, we'll review the original approvals to figure out what the correct process is to, to correct this.
Yeah. Perfect. All right, anyone else? All right, if not, I'll go to council for comments. No comments from council. I will entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to go into closed session to discuss the legal matter. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like son. Motion carries.
Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Good night.